Followed order, the June 12, 2018 city council meeting. Roll call, please.
Mayor Webb?
Here.
Mayor Prokofim, Aubrey?
Here.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Here.
Councilmember Laquiro?
Here.
Councilmember Allen?
Here.
It takes us down to the invocation and Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand. I'd like to have the Eagle Scout come up and start us off with the Pledge of Allegiance after the invocation.
Holy Spirit, source of all life, we gather together as the elected officials of our community, charged by the people, to discern our future together. We are a diverse body brought together by the same Spirit. We pray that we will be faithful to the work at hand, to set aside our own personal agendas, to speak, to seek out the greater good. Open our minds and our hearts to listen in for your will for us and bestow upon us your wisdom and grace. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're all set for right now.
Thank you very much.
We'll bring you back up in a minute.
Counsel, approval of the revised agenda?
Mr. Mayor, move approval of the agenda as presented and revised.
I'll second.
Any dissension? Hearing none. We have an agenda. Special presentations. Resolution honoring Shawn Thompson.
Mr. Mayor, fortunately tonight, there's not a great deal of city business on this agenda, so we get an opportunity to do two special presentations for some young people that I think have done outstanding things here in our community. Really, this is one of the times where we get to have a fun meeting. The first resolution I would like to read into the record and then I will give you to present is a resolution honoring Shawn Thompson. Whereas, the Boy Scouts of America have played an important role in building character and capability of young people in the United States for more than 100 years. And whereas Eagle Scout is the highest possible rank that a scout can attain, signifying years of hard work in the completion of a project demonstrating service to the community. And whereas Shawn Thompson chose a project that would both honor the brave men and women of the United States Armed Forces and at the same time, serve the Hazel Park community. And whereas Shawn Thompson determined that he would place several benches in Hazel Park honoring those who served with special recognition for those who were taken as prisoners of war and those who are missing in action. And whereas these benches will not only beautify our community and provide a comfortable place to sit, they will long serve as a reminder of the sacrifices made by the brave members of our armed forces. And the benches will also serve as a reminder of the dedication of a patriotic Eagle Scout who realized that the brave actions of our service members must never be forgotten. So therefore be it resolved, the Hazel Park City Council hereby honors Shawn Thompson for achieving the rank of Eagle Scout and we thank him for his wonderful benches as we wish this fine young man the best of luck in all of his future endeavors. Shawn, would you please come up? Mr. Mayor, would you like to present?
Congratulations.
Thank you again very much. I'm dearly honored. I also want to present a, so this was the leftover money after raising over $1,400 for the project, $22 was left. And it goes to the beneficiary, which is Hazel Park, and I'm also going to present this to you too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm happy to say it's a pleasure to work with this fine young man and we're so proud of you and I know that you will do great things. Thank you so much for your commitment to that. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, with your permission, I will turn this over to the recreation department so that we can put this donation to its highest and best use.
You're right.
Great idea.
It takes us down to our next resolution, honoring the Hazel Park High School Robotics Team. I see them all in the back there. Mr. Klobuchar.
Once again, Mr. Mayor, a very happy resolution to present. Mrs. Sparks is here. I've known her husband since high school, maybe before high school. And she is the coach slash mentor of the Hazel Park Robotics Team and they have just had some absolutely extraordinary accomplishments this year. Students, we are so proud of you and all of the cool things that you have done to bring honor to the Hazel Park community that really I can't overstress enough what a tremendous accomplishment this is. I hope that you folks are proud of this accomplishment for the rest of your lives and I hope that it serves as a foundation for you to in the future pursue and continue to pursue your studies so that we can expect nothing but great things from you in the future. I'm sure one day we will produce our own Bill Gates or Steve Jobs or other great titan of industry or fantastic scientists that discover something new or invent something that benefits all of humanity. So without further ado, I will read the resolution into the record. A proclamation honoring the Hazel Park High School Robotics Team. Whereas, the city of Hazel Park recognizes that the Hazel Park High School First Robotics Program has done a fine job of promoting STEM education and at the same time, earning many competitive honors for the Hazel Park community. And whereas, the students and mentors of the Hazel Park High School First Robotics Program have worked diligently to design and construct competitive robots to meet this season's challenges, while at the same time balancing other responsibilities such as schoolwork, sports teams, and academic clubs. And whereas, the hard work and dedication of the Hazel Park High School team was rewarded as team members earning high honors for this season, including several members being named finalists in World Robo Fest and team members winning first place in World Robo Fest Senior Classic Sumo Event. All of this in a season in which all team members should be proud of the outstanding work that they have produced. So therefore be it resolved, the mayor and council hereby honors the highly motivated and dedicated students of the HPHS First Robotics Team and we recognize them for the teamwork, sportsmanship, and technical skills they displayed during this season. We wish the students and mentors all the best in their future endeavors. Congratulations.
Please come up to the front.
If we could have Pam come up and bring the students with her. She tells me that there is a presentation and I will present you. I've got like 11 copies of this resolution.
Cassie Clusek.
Tyler Vangina.
Xander Bird.
Gabe Fortress.
Jason Lentini.
Jackie Huff.
Connor Johnson.
Tyler Sledge.
Katie Colesby.
Aaron King.
Riley Doctor.
Did you get one? Do you have one? Congratulations to the Robotics Team, all of you. Wonderful job. And Mrs. Sparks.
Well, I do want to make one clarification. There is a robotics program called First Robotics. They are also at our school, but we are a robotics team, but not necessarily that robotics team.
Okay.
And they want to tell you, we want to be accurate.
Okay.
So they can tell you about their projects. And I cannot tell you how proud I am working with these students. They are, they are like my kids, they're my family. I'm so proud of their accomplishments. Not only are they brilliant in Hazel Park, they are some of the best minds in the whole entire world. So without further ado, we're going to let Connor use his gift here.
Hi. I would like to say that is an honor for us to be here to present what we've been doing for the year. This year, we've been very productive and been able to do a lot of new things and a lot more things, bring back more trophies. Without further ado, I'd like to start up with the presentation. So first up, I would like to say we, I'm sorry, I'm just very nervous.
Take your time.
Okay. First up, we have the V2X project. It was a project dedicated to make a vehicle autonomous, a small green vehicle. If I'd like to get that up, please? So the goal of it is to make it autonomous and detect objects like a car. And so what the main goal is, is to make it like an actual car, drive it or have it drive around on its own, get to point A to point B without human interface. So this is our V2X. We named him Charles. He currently can't do anything, but we are still working on making him sense anything. What he can do for right now is just move forward. We've been able to get a plaque for recognition of trying this out because this is in fact a new project this year that a group of four, including I, were able to obtain last year, but we were able to do more this year. And so we had the plaque and we also got a first place trophy for ambassadorship because we did, with some of our projects, hit the Madison Park Newspaper. So we were able to get around the word of what we've been doing here. Next up is the autonomous Jeep project. Like the V2X, it's to make a car go move on its own without human interface and so we brought the Jeep with us. Instead of a tiny car, it's a giant Barbie Jeep. Right now, it doesn't have any sensors. Again, it's also a work in progress. What it can do is that it can move, we were able to implement an actuator to move the wheel, not the wheel, the wheels, because we have it set up to where with the actuator will move and push a gas pedal. We also have it set up with an Arduino to turn the wheel so it can move around, forward, backward. So I will have Xander demonstrate it moving. It's a work in progress. Like I said, it runs on an actuator. We're still kind of trying to function that to put that into the Arduino. So right now, it's manually and it won't stop until you switch out the electricity.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we'll have the RC car. That was another project we had, which was to make and modify an RC car to do a bunch of different challenges, including make it go faster. So right now, we are picking that up. Lovely thing. We were able to come with all the, the V2X, the RC car, and the autonomous Jeep are all at the same competition. They all functioned, it did something and was more of, instead of more of a competition, it was more of a day to learn what we need to do. So that's what we got. So we have plans of what we need to do, how to make it work. I'll give Aaron D. Mike to introduce this.
So the RC car, we had named it Jaws. I'm not the mechanical side of this RC car. That's for Tyler. But I can give off that the wiring and the trying to configure the remote from a different battery during this time of practicing. I wasn't able to join the competition, but I did wish them the best of luck. So there are multiple parts of the electronics. I'm just going to make it quick. I used to do long presentations with other classes, but we have a motor in the back, a fan on top of the motor so that it does not overheat. So they say that it overheated during competition? Yeah.
Due to the painting on the body that we did, our custom-made body, made the paint or made the heat get absorbed into here and even though we had the fan, the motor still overheated and shut down occasionally, but we got through that. It shut down on one competition that was top speed. We hit 53 miles an hour and then it completely dead stopped.
The wiring to the motor controls to the relay, the relay consists of these resistors that resist voltage coming from the LiPo battery. We have two sets of batteries, the nickel metal hydride battery is just a practice battery for when we start off the year, and LiPo battery is for when we're a week or two before a competition. So we know what, you know, the speed and its maximum speed, how much power it can resist, so on and so forth. Relay also connects to the TQ link. The TQ link connects to the remote, which has this safeguard in here for the antenna. It is waterproof, so we usually test it out on the snow to, you know, test terrain. And we also have the, ooh, the LiPo battery is something that I really want to get more into because during testing, when we would pull the trigger back all the way, it would tend to go faster than it should and would only go two wheels and would tip over. So yeah. We'll try and give it a demonstration, but nah, this is a LiPo battery. But thank you for letting us introduce this RC battery.
Yeah, LiPo batteries are fun, but when it makes it flip over, it doesn't get as much fun. Very dangerous. So the next one, next project we have up is the VEX IQ project. That was a project that was also partial autonomous with the game and Battle Sumo. They were autonomous and then there's modes for the VEX IQ also to control it, but we strictly had it as autonomous. Lawrence Tech, they were, Lawrence Tech University gave us VEX IQs to work with. And so with our teams, we were able to construct very good VEX IQs that were effective in game and in Battle Sumo. I'll give it to Riley to speak more of it.
Hey, I'm Riley from the VEX IQ team. So we have a bunch of robots, but two of them specifically. We have his robot, which was the one that won first place in the world.
That's the world.
Oh, we do not have that robot here, but we wish we could. So this robot right here is, we named it Boris, and it's meant to go over a table and collect tennis balls. It's got a little conveyor belt here. It pushes it up into the bucket and it's supposed to empty them out into a box. Six in the world with this one.
That's amazing.
So we programmed this in C, which is a kind of programming software that's used in manufacturing jobs, like to automate manufacturing and things like that. And we just type in commands and it'll put them out one by one. Like there are certain functions, like say if this is pushed, it'll detect it and push it to the side to like get rid of water bottles off of a table or something like that. Yeah, we performed well and.
Can I ask how many people were involved? Like how many, how many members of your team are there? Just because I don't think anybody here realizes how many members there actually are, other than the 11 that are here.
We have a class.
Right, an entire class, right?
Yes, and then some other extra people come for a robotics club where we do more work on our projects.
Right.
I don't have an exact number.
I got the list and I want to say, it was over, was it over 30? Yeah. So there's, it's wonderful to see all of you work together also. How many, do we know how many entrants there were into this world's competition?
Well, I mean for this, we only had two people on this one and.
Yes.
Oh, how many countries? There were teams from France, Canada, a couple from China, Mexico, a bunch. Over 50.
That's amazing. Thank you.
That's quite an achievement.
Right.
Quite an achievement. Thank you.
So not only do we just do land projects, we also do projects for underwater. We have done two projects for underwater ROVs, remotely operated vehicles. And so with those, we have the Square One, which is what most of our projects come from. One of them is the underwater ROV and then we have the Navy Sea Perch. So I'd like to get those brung up, possible. So coming up right now is the Sea Perch. They won third place. Yes, third and second from using the Sea Perch in this bag.
So this is Cowfish. Basically, we built the, we built Cowfish from scratch and, I don't know if you can hear me. So we built him from scratch and all the motors built ourselves, frame built ourselves, and fully functional. The motors work. It's so awesome. And what we got from the competition was third place for our obstacle course, which was like we had to drive through hooves. And we went on like first thing in the morning, basically, and our fastest time was 2 minutes and 53 seconds. And then for the other one that we got second place in, which is this lovely trophy, we, it was the challenge course and we had to pick up objects that were underwater and move them from one table to another. And we had a time limit of 15 minutes to do it and we completed it in eight minutes. So we got extra points for completing it early and picked up all of the things off the table.
Great.
Very cool.
Congratulations.
Good evening. How's everybody? All right, so this monstrosity is the Bismarck. Named by him. So what this was, so it's powered by three motors, all by a, what is it, a car battery? By a car battery. And it runs underwater. It's buoyant, it will float, it's also mounted with a camera in the front. Now, you're probably wondering what that is, what that, what this thing is. Well, it was kind of our apology for a claw because we were, our original intent was to outfit it with a claw and that didn't go over too well. So we decided to go forth with a channel lock system because the challenge was to collect balloons underwater, one of the challenges. So we kind of modified it to where it will, where the string goes in, it will keep getting caught by the pegs in the system eventually, and it will catch and it will go where it needs to go. So it's perfect for a challenge like that. It's, of course, it's not going to stay there the whole time or ever, but it's going to be, it's Bismarck.
Interesting.
Yeah, so we have another ROV that's right now in pieces. I'll explain, I'll explain that later. Hey, okay, at least the Bismarck can not fall apart, even though I designed, even though I designed both of them, okay?
Wait, what was that again?
Oh, yeah, hers. I don't remember much. But yeah, so the one over there, the one over there in pieces is we, that I named Yamato. I made that in a summer program for the USD out in Catalina Island. Yes, it's in pieces, that's one of its drawbacks. She has a great habit of falling apart.
We have Bismarck and Yamato.
Yes.
Nice note, good nod to historical.
Yes, we got the German Battleship Bismarck and the Japanese Battleship Yamato.
Ironically, they were both sunk.
They were. They were. And. Yeah. Okay. Still have one, yes. But back to this, I designed and made, I designed both of them and while we still, while the Bismarck was more like the Yamato, during the competition, and when time came closer to the competition, we kept modifying to where it is now. And so with this here, oh no, I'm still looking, I'm like huh, how could I fix this? After having it for about maybe a year and a half, like hmm, maybe even a year and a half, maybe a year. But I think that is all we have to offer.
Well, that is quite impressive.
Yes, out of all, out of all the days that she doesn't fall apart, it's going to fall apart today. Fantastic.
Thank you for showing us all your projects.
I'd also like to thank Ms. Sparks for having this program for us and being with us for two years. Some of us have been here for two years, some of them, some of us are new. I'm one of the second year students to do this. Unfortunately, she's retiring and so we have to find another person that'll at least take over as a teacher and then we just run wild and do whatever. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you again for coming out. Congratulations. It was a very nice presentation. I believe we all were intrigued in many ways in how you got your accomplishments. And thank you. And you have a great teacher that pushed you because I know she pushed my daughters when they had her for science.
And, you know, we wish you, Mrs. Sparks, all the best in your retirement and I'm just sorry to see you retire so young and, but I hope that you have a great retirement because I want you to know, as a resident of Hazel Park, how proud I am of your students and of you for these accomplishments. You really did a great job as the advisor to this team and this whole community is proud of you and your accomplishments, as well as those of the students. So thank you. That's a good thing. Thank you all. Keep us posted on what you do.
Counsel, can I get a motion for a recess, please? Move for a five-minute recess?
Support.
Take a recess here and take some pictures of the robotic team if anybody would like, any council members?
Do you guys want to get your pictures taken with the robots and the robotic team? Let's go down there and do it.
Maybe we can just get a picture.
Congratulations. That is outstanding, you are a fine young man, you will do good things in this world. He's, uh, he's, uh, he's a little bit of a... Absolutely. And this is a big competition, I mean, I couldn't, right after he blows. So, uh, ten weeks later, he does that, that's, uh, I was thankful for that. He will remember the rest of their lives, go his competition, he's a member of our DEA.
Yeah.
He has one big, huge thing in his office, and that is the Eagle Scout Award. And he got that in the fifties.
And so, I would say, if you have those students, like, kind of, kind of, they're, they're all, they're coming, and then start charging me, and I'm just like, oh, what? There's shots, like, oh, crap, and they all just let them fire. It's like, yes, they're there.
Did you hear what Andy just said to me?
What's that?
Did you hear what Andy just said to me?
Go ahead.
Did you hear what Andy just said to me? I said, I used to teach science, and he goes, is that who they used to call Homer? And I said, I will punch him.
You said the word, you said living something.
Living science.
Is it yes or no?
Living science means, uh...
The science of life and biology.
Yeah, it's biology, so it's hydroponics and floral design, animal husbandry, fish tank and reptile maintenance, pre-vet tech. You? To the bathroom?
Look for the yellow shirt. Uh, I don't see her.
She went to the restroom. She went to the restroom.
By the way, thank you school board members here, supporting the students as well. Chuck Hempel, Sue Hempel, Bev Hinton, thank you guys.
I was going to introduce them, and we'll come back.
I'm losing my mind, right? I just put my mouth on.
What did you do with your gum?
Oh, my fault, thank you. I was over there.
Thank you, Sean.
No, it's seven, mine, I've got mine.
It was sitting over here, I said, oh, go to the edge.
No, I've got...
It gives them a...
The what?
The otter box.
I have a life proof on mine.
I didn't, um, see, I didn't pee.
Also, it has a Telomor Goo on the back. I don't even drink whiskey, but it's a pop socket.
Oh, is that cool?
Yeah, and it goes on a little stand in my car.
That is cool.
Yeah, I'm gonna move it. I had a custom one with my dog on it, and it broke, and then St. Patrick's Day came, and they give... Bye, guys, thank you.
Bye-bye.
And, um, this was in the free bag, it's like, and I was like, well, I'll take a free one, because they're like twenty bucks.
Cool, yeah.
They're like twenty dollars. Good work, Amy, good work.
I enjoyed it very much.
It was very cool, it's nice to have this. Okay. We're back in order, reconvening after our short recess. I'd like to take a moment here and announce our school board members. Mrs. Hinton, Mrs. Hempel, and Mr. Hempel, thank you for coming. And it's been wonderful to have some of the students from the Hazel Park High School here. Thank you. It opens up to civic announcements. Does anyone here have any civic announcements? I believe we have Chuck Ladue for his historical museum and Lions Club Memorial Weekend.
Thank you, that's kind of a tough act to follow there.
Yes, it is.
Uh, two things for you this evening, Chuck Ladue, three-three-nine West George, by the way. First of all, the Hazel Park Historical Museum will be open this, next Thursday from six to eight PM. That's our regularly scheduled Thursday nights, the third Sunday of every, or third, excuse me, Thursday of every month. Also, the first Sunday of every month from twelve to four, we're open as well. And if you want to make an appointment, contact us through our Facebook page. Excuse me. Secondly, I'd like to thank everybody that came out over Memorial Day weekend and supported the Lions Club Refreshment Tent. It's another success this year, had a lot of fun, and it's good to see everybody out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Chuck.
Thanks. Thank you.
I believe we have Lois Riedel.
I have something that everybody can do. I'm, Hazel Park Neighborhood in Richmond is going to be sponsoring a citywide garage sale. And this will be all, everybody that wants to compete, compete, wants to do it, put it in their yards. And it'll be three days, and the times are on here. And put colorful balloons up by your house or at the corner, so they'll know you have garage stuff, and try it out.
There you go. Well, thank you very much.
And that's July thirteenth, fourteenth, and fifteenth, correct?
We put that on the cable, please, and on our city web page.
And on the Facebook page as well.
Thank you. Any other civic announcements? Seeing none, it takes us to public discussion. Anyone have any public discussion? Hearing no one, then we'll close our public discussion. Consent agenda, council, what would be your pleasure for the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I'll move approval of items one through six on the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Any dissension to that, any discussion? Motion passes. The applicant for the tax service at two-three-three-zero-eight-John R. Is anyone here? Anyone here for a business license for two-two-eight-one-eight-John R? Dollar General? Nope. Okay, we'll move on to that. Administration reports, Oakland County Local Road Improvement Matching Fund Pilot Program Agreement, East Woodward Heights Boulevard is an extension. Mr. Klobuchar?
Yes, I don't see Helene Zach here today, but I want to thank the, she was here, I think she had to step out. But I want to thank her for her efforts in this. This is that program that was established by the Oakland County Board of Commissioners that are sharing some of their county resources with us to repair our local roads. This is the money that we are using to incrementally repair Woodward Heights, and the administration respectfully requests approval.
Counsel?
Mr. Mayor, I'll move approval of the road commission, I'm sorry, let me put it a little better. Oakland County Local Road Improvement Matching Fund Pilot Program Agreement for East Woodward Heights.
Do I have a support?
Support.
Any discussion, dissension? Motion carries, and asks to continue the paving at Woodward Heights, which we've already started with some of the federal, I mean, Oakland County grant dollars, and it's an ongoing thing for the next few years. Thank you. Boards and commissions, anyone for boards and commissions? Seeing no one, tabled item is none. New business, any council members have any new business they'd like to bring up?
Your Honor, not necessarily new business, but could Mr. Klobuchar, just here in this group, could you give a roads update to let the general public know exactly what's going to happen with South John R soon?
Could you just reach into my mind and pluck that right up?
You know what's up right there also, is broken system municipal finance.
That's right, I will, I will have to slide that in there somewhere. Uh, just to update the residents about what our plans are for the roads. Uh, we hope to be able to resurface South John R from Eight Mile to I-75 this construction season. Our plans next year are to finish John R from I-75 to Ten Mile, those repairs, and also to do Nine Mile. Now, we did receive, and were approved for, money from the Federal Aid Committee. This is federal dollars that will help us pay to repair Nine Mile. But those funds are for two thousand twenty-one. So obviously, we want to proceed ahead with those repairs. But in order for us to do a build forward, it is important for us to receive the approvals that we need to receive from the state of Michigan, so that we do not lose those important federal dollars in the future. So that's why we cannot proceed immediately to do all of the roads. Uh, we will then bond for the remaining costs that are not covered for Nine Mile and for North John R next year. Uh, we should be able to use existing funds that we have for roads to cover John R. Again, whether or not we are able to do it this year or not will simply depend upon the availability of a road contractor to be able to perform that job up to standard. Uh, I read on Facebook, somebody said, well, they, they approved doing this at the last meeting, and I'm not seeing any construction yet. I'm sorry, this is a much more lengthy process than simply approving it and, uh, you know, going on the phone and ordering up Acme Road Construction with an app on your smartphone. This is a process where we have to put together a bid package, and we have to make sure that the bidder is qualified and make sure that they can actually do those roads. So we are doing all we can to move as fast as we can to get those roads fixed and completed.
Thank you, sir, I know that you and your departments have tried to keep us up to date, and we've had briefings. And the biggest thing that I've taken away from this is, we want to do, get this done this year, but it's mainly going to be dependent on the availability of contractors.
That is a completely accurate statement, that's it in a nutshell.
Thank you.
Uh, we're doing all that we can, and again, we're going to continue to patch and do some things too with the other streets that we can't fully repair this year, as best that we can. Unfortunately, we've got to follow these procedures. We don't want to lose almost a million dollars in federal aid dollars. We want to make sure that we cross every T and dot every I and properly make sure we make application. So, because in the past, and Councilman Webb remembers this, when he was on the Planning Commission, a previous administration did not do what they were supposed to do, and they lost over three hundred thousand dollars in federal dollars, because they moved improperly.
That we could not get repaired by Edison, we had to do them ourselves.
There, yeah, there were multiple problems with that thing. So we're going to take advantage, obviously, of nearly a million dollars in federal dollars. That's money that does not have to come out of the Hazel Park Tax.
We're going to do some major patchwork in some of the worst areas on Nine Mile, just to get us through another year. They're probably not going to be a permanent fix, but they'll be better than just cold patch.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, just so everyone knows.
Thank you.
Any other council members have any comments on our new business? Okay, let's move on. Communications from department heads. Chief, would you like to come up? Chief Bukos is our new police chief.
Hello.
Welcome.
I just wanted to let everyone know that we have submitted our application for hope not handcuffs. So, in the past, they've said it takes three to six months to get it going. I think maybe it'll, might be faster, since there's other departments in the area that are also trying to get in, so it'll be a little quicker. And for those that don't know what it is, it's, um, basically people that can come into the station asking for help with addiction regarding opioids.
Yeah.
And other drugs.
Great program.
As far as getting treatment, so. Instead of us maybe arresting on small warrants and that kind of thing, we'll try to get them treatment.
Great, it's wonderful. While you're up here, give everyone an update on the law for the Fourth of July, for the fireworks, so we don't get inundated with phone calls?
Oh, yes. They're already starting. The law states that Fourth of July is a national holiday, so you can do your fireworks the day before, day of, and day after, only. But that does not, if it's a disturbance or a hazard, there's ordinances that can also be in effect that we may enforce if there's a problem. We try to talk to people, we're not just going to shut everyone's fund down, but we want people to be safe also.
Be responsible, that's all, all that matters.
Yes, chief, also, while you're up here, would you please pass along my thanks and the community's thanks for your department and your reserve officers and MCSU for all of their hard work during Memorial Weekend? Um, they were, it was blistering hot out there, and I know they, how hard they worked. And it was fun at the refreshments tent. I had, I could serve beer, because I'm on council now, but I had a chance to just sit in People Watch, which that's the place to do it. And folks were coming up to your officers and thanking them, and introducing their kids to them and wanting to have pictures taken with them. So that was really special to see, appreciate the hard work that they all did.
Thank you, I will pass that on, and I'm glad you mentioned that. Um, it was, to, for our standards, it was a very successful carnival and parade. We only had two arrests, and that was not till Monday, so it was a good weekend, and we expect more when it's, like you said, that blistering hot. Um, we had a lot of people, mentioning me and other officers, the appreciation for the parade and how professional we looked. A lot of us were doing salutes as our veterans went by.
Yes, they were, you have a lot of veterans in your department, too.
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Chief, one more thing.
And one more thing.
One more thing. It's summertime, there's a lot of kids on bikes on the side roads. Could we maybe have some cars focused down into the neighborhoods and kind of just warn people to slow down with the kids riding around?
Definitely, I've been reminding them.
And also, the bicyclist, maybe inform them they need to have stuff that glows in the dark.
We got, we got some nighttime officers that are vigilant with the bikes, but yes, I'll remind the guys.
Just for safety purposes, after hearing about that young man that was hit out there and killed just the other day. Thank you.
Yeah, just, I know we've mentioned it a couple of meetings ago, that bicyclists do need to obey the traffic laws of normal vehicles also. So if you're on the road, you got to stop at stop signs and that kind of thing also.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I'll let you go. AC? Nothing? Mr. Klobuchar?
Yes, I'm glad we can update the residents on the progress that we're going to have with respect to roads. I do want to remind all of the residents in Hazel Park that road funding is another aspect of, you know, Michigan's broken system of municipal finance. And again, roads are underfunded. Remember, cities in Michigan are wholly and totally creatures of state government. There's no mention in the United States Constitution of cities. Uh, each state creates its own rules for cities, and in Michigan, the system that we are operating under underfunds roads, as you can see. Roads are not only in tough shape in Hazel Park, they're in tough shape all over the metro Detroit region. Uh, you have a state road funding system that funds by length of road instead of by the amount of traffic on the road. So, uh, roads in the Upper Peninsula that have a fraction of the traffic on them that our roads do are funded at the same level that our roads are. So this really does, this really does need to be changed. Again, good luck with that, but... Uh, again, good luck with that, but we're not gonna stop trying. So I want to echo what Beth Holland said about the outstanding job that, uh, our police department did, uh, on Memorial Day. And I also want to thank, uh, our recreation department and our other community volunteers who came together to put on, uh, an outstanding, uh, Memorial Day festival. It was the, uh, second best that we did in terms of, uh, revenue generated from the carnival itself. Uh, police and, uh, our police reserves and MCSU folks did a great job. Uh, speaking of that, the city of Hazel Park needs volunteers. We need people to volunteer to help us. We need people to join our Community Emergency Response Team, which is basically, uh, you know, a twenty-four-hour training program where you would be under the direction of our fire department but could also assist our police department at special events. We need people to join our Mobile Communications Support Unit, which is the folks that, uh, spend time watching businesses and patrolling and, uh, being at special events to be the eyes and ears of, uh, the police department. And we need people to join our Police Reserve Program where you, uh, assist our regular officers with law enforcement operations. So again, I know that people are busy, uh, but it's very important if you, uh, have some time to give and you have the capability to perform in one of these, in one of these roles that you consider joining, uh, the city of Hazel Park as a volunteer. And we'll be placing, uh, these volunteer opportunities, uh, on our city's Facebook page and website very soon this month. So again, we do need volunteers. Again, it'd be very difficult for us to police Memorial Day without the reserves and the MCSU. It really would be. They play a critical role. And, uh, we want to get folks trained as Community Emergency Response Team members. They could assist with that process too, and they could be of assistance to us if there is an emergency or, uh, a serious incident here in Hazel Park. So please, again, consider donating your time and volunteering for these important roles. That's all that I have.
Thank you. Our, uh, city attorney, Melissa?
Nothing, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. And, uh, Councilwoman Holland?
Thank you all for coming out tonight. And how cool was that for the robotics team and to have an Eagle Scout from, come from our community? Um, one of the gentlemen, Tyler, uh, the one with the really curly hair, Tyler was one of our rock stars last year when we had steam demonstrations at the museum and at the farmer's market. And he sat and he looked at this project, and it's just a silly little thing. It's a kid's bathtub, a little bit, or swimming pool with water in it. And we had sheets of aluminum foil and a bucket of pennies. And the goal was to see how many pennies you could float on that sheet of foil. Well, this guy sat there and did this for a while. And then he set the record of fifty-one pennies on a two-by-two-inch square of aluminum foil. So he really put some thought into it. I'm, I'm just so proud of our students and the opportunities that continue to, to be formed at the school district here. Y'all have, uh, made some good changes, and I'm, I'm proud of our administration team, school board members, and the students, just outstanding students. And to piggyback on that, I had the privilege of, uh, what would you call this? Spending quality time with incoming freshmen? I don't know how, how to call that. We had a lock-in at the high school. And lots of activities, lots of local businesses donated food, donated activities, prizes. And there were over thirty students, and, uh, right about midnight, I think, is when they tapped out. That, it was just a fun night. And, uh, excited to hear what their goals are and what their, their challenges are coming into high school and that they're facing it head-on. Um, again, want to thank everybody who came out and supported the community during the Memorial Weekend. Um, this is about those who gave their all. And it was outstanding, as always, to see our local hometown heroes, uh, lead off the parade. Lando did actually lead the parade, did the kids with the bicycles. But we had veterans from Hazel Park that, as always, lead the parade. And, uh, I thank them for their service and for just a good weekend. Most people until the very end, as Chief said, and it was a spectacular bad behavior on video. But, um, for the most part, it was just a really outstanding weekend. Lastly, Happy Father's Day. Um, I am blessed to get to spend Sunday with my parents. And as I travel out there, I'm going to go past a few cemeteries and see a lot of folks who are gonna be visiting their fathers. And I will be passing a few where men who were mentors in my life, not my biological father, but men that played a role. So I want to wish all of the fathers a Happy Father's Day and for all of the men that take a leadership role in bringing up the next generation and caring for them. Thank you so much. Y'all have a good evening.
Thank you. Councilwoman, Alyssa?
I could see it coming. Always, thank you. Thank you, everybody, for coming out. It was great to see, um, a packed session here. It was an honor to be part of recognizing our robotics team and our local Eagle Scout. Those are great, um, accomplishments for young people in our community. As a former science teacher, it is exciting to me to see people be successful in science because science is real. Additionally, I want to thank everybody that came out this weekend to support our charity Pub Crawl we hosted here in Hazel Park. Um, it was a success. Um, we will be donating the proceeds to, um, three community organizations. Promise Zone, the, um, Friends of Hazel Park Library, and the Hazel Park Arts Council will receive funding from that. Um, I don't have the total yet, but I will bring that. Also, fireworks are starting. Please be safe, please be careful, please be aware of your neighbors and their comfort levels as well with fireworks. Um, we do have our own ordinance that is in addition to the state law, so please be aware of that. It's under the Munich Code eight-point-oh-nine, if you'd like to look it up. The city's going to be sharing it on the website soon. Um, I want to congratulate our graduates that are coming up here in Hazel Park. Um, I think they're finished, uh, this week. Yeah, so congratulations to the class of two thousand eighteen Hazel Park High School. Uh, Chief Bukos, I want to thank you for listening to all of my harassment about the Hope Not Handcuffs program. I know it was a long trek, um, and I'm really excited and proud of our community for being a part of that. So thank you, and thank you to your officers for supporting that move. Um, and finally, uh, Happy Father's Day to my dad, Happy Father's Day to all the dads, and, um, my mom's birthday is coming up, so Happy Birthday to my mom. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Carroll?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, I'd say congratulations to the Hazel Park High School Robotics Club and Ashawn Thompson. This is just two more examples of the fine young folks we have in the Hazel Park schools. And appreciate all the volunteers that made, uh, the Memorial Day a good weekend. As it's been mentioned, can't be mentioned enough, it is summertime. Watch out for the bicyclists. The bicyclist, it's the law. You do need to be, you do need to have lights on your vehi, your bicycle when you're riding at night. It's the law. I'm not the best at, uh, riding, stopping at every stop sign, but I, uh... The stoplights, I get, you know, it's, but I'm just saying. Sometime, you know, when I stop at a stop sign, the car stops and it's like, you know, they want you to go by. So they don't, but anyway, that's just how it is.
At least you stopped. I had one today that almost ran into my car, and she's, I was stopped waiting for pedestrians to walk across the sidewalk before I made my turn. And she's on the street, and she's screaming, "Move, move." Well, I guess she just wanted me to run right over those pedestrians. Uh, so if you're on a bicycle, you're correct. Please obey the traffic laws.
And, um, about the, uh, science, the, uh, robotics club, I want to congratulate Pam Sparks on her fine work and congratulations on her retirement. The Pub Crawl, thanks for all those volunteers, because I had a great time, and I didn't have to do anything. Just showed up, had a good time, and talked to everybody. Thanks to the sponsors, Shamrocks, Jobar, Salomons, uh, the Madison Park Bowl, and the Cozy Lounge. It was a lot of fun, made all five places.
And our, and our local resident, Sue Burrows, was the organizer of that.
Oh, okay. Well, I met Sue. We hung out. We were, I was playing euchre with Tim later. So it was a great night. Um, only one question. Do we need to exec sesh for anything?
Not tonight.
Good. Thank you for everybody for coming out, and have a great summer.
Mayor pro Tim. Um, Aubrey?
Uh, so want to thank everybody for coming out. It's nice seeing a full room. Um, and, uh, I, sometimes I feel like I get thrown under the stick here because everyone gets to see all these wonderful things, and I'm just like, ditto, ditto, and ditto. Uh, so congratulations, class of two thousand eighteen. Congratulations to the robotics team, uh, to our Eagle Scout. Um, I echo everything with the bike safety. Uh, um, hoping to join, uh, a new bike club here in the city and start riding around, spread the word about bike safety. Ed knows, and I'm letting everyone else know, I'm still pushing for bike lanes as we redo John R. Uh, so we'll have more news on that to come. And Happy Father's Day to everybody, uh, both biological and not. It was raised by my stepfather, so I think stepdads are just awesome. Um, so, and...
Well said.
And that's all I have.
Thank you. I thank everybody for coming out this evening, and, uh, congratulations again to the robotics team. I'll just say it again. And, because they just well deserve every bit of gratitude and congratulating that they need because of the support that they, they get from the schools and just the thought that they put into the projects is unbelievable. I'd also say thank you to Ashawn Thompson, and congratulations on his endeavor there as an Eagle Scout. That's quite a big achievement. And, uh, not to go to thanking the police and the fire department for their hard work this Memorial Weekend. And, uh, the fire department did put on a great display at the end of the parade. The parade turned out really nice. But we couldn't have that parade without the hard work of the police department, running from street to street to keep everything in check, to make sure we have good safety. Uh, I believe, uh, the kids had a great time, uh, with all the candy we threw to them. Uh, you know, we might get, uh, scolded by a few parents here and there, but, um, I think it's, uh, a great time for the kids to have a good opportunity to see everyone and see a nice parade and kind of socia, get out and socialize a little bit. But with that being said, I'm not gonna keep any, any longer. Have a good evening. Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Mayor?
Second.
We're adjourned. Thank you.